Seven, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall Pleaser.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Unfortunately, I can't promise as quick as last month. But we'll do our best, right? All right. Our first case today is Z thirty-nine, twenty twenty-five. This is the application of Chris Dougherty. Some of you may remember this one from a little more than a year ago. This is two point nine seven acres, currently zoned R-one and R-three, and requesting to go to R-four, multiple-family residential district. It is not an extension of the R-four. A parcel of land on the north frontage of Pollard Road, near Pollard Road and Quentin Drive intersection. It's an existing tract with multiple residential structures and a former non-conforming body shop facility. This is in Council Ward number four. The applicant's statement is to bring the property up to codes and one day further develop. Again, back in twenty twenty-three, this previously had a case trying to attempt R-four at the time. Here's the zoning case, zoning map here. You can see there's R-four on the corner, R-four across Peters Mill, R-three in between it. A little bit of R-three on the front of this property that used to have a rental on it, and then R-one is the remainder. This is the future land use map. You can see the majority of this area is in suburban neighborhood, and then some areas for neighborhood commercial and mixed residential neighborhoods across the street on Peters Mill Road. Here's the property looking towards Peters Mill Road. And then from Peters Mill Road on the left. Department comments, Street Department said sidewalk will be required, must follow the access ordinance. CDE made a comment about future development of the site and utility lines on site. The school system provided the comments for their schools listed. Historical estimates would put this at thirty-four units if fully developed. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the plan. The future land use designation for this parcel is suburban neighborhood, and this designation indicates that attached housing is appropriate along major transportation corridors. Pollard Road is classified as a collector and serves a major transportation route in the area. The proposed R-four multifamily district is not out of character with the development pattern along Peters Mill Road corridor, and the Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tindall. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke against this one at the Regional Planning Commission meeting. I had concerns with, I know the, the person, the applicant had talked about future development, that that's not what they're trying to do right now. However, as we've often set up here, although it may not be the intent right now, we do have to think about the future. And should we vote to change this to R-four, they could still turn right around and be able to develop that. And I just didn't feel as though it fit in the area where it's at. As you can see, half of it, well, really, three-fourths of it is surrounded by the R-one zoning. I know you have the R-three to one side of it and a very small portion of the R-three there on the corner. But I, I just couldn't see supporting this, and that was why I voted against it at the RPC meeting, and will again be voting against it come Thursday night.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. To echo Mr. Aitken's comments, it's too much of a question. If you look right across from Pictures Mill Road, opposite side of Pollard Road, there's that huge development that's going in right now. We have no idea what that effect is going to be on traffic. You know, it took years to bring Pollard Road up to the stand, I mean, not Pollard Road, but Pictures Mill Road up to the standard that it is. And I just can't see adding any more traffic until we know exactly what's going to go on with this newer, bigger development. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment or question? We ready for item B, ordinance twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall Pleaser.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Planning Commission Case Z forty, twenty twenty-five. This is an application of Richard Garrett. Applicant is Janet Palmer. And this is point five-three acres, currently zoned R-one, single-family residential, and requesting O-one office district. It is an extension of the office district across the street. The property is a parcel fronting the northern frontage of Memorial Drive, north of Memorial and Landrum Place intersection. It's currently a single-family home site. This is in Council Ward number ten. The applicant's statement is to convert the existing house into a small real estate office. Here's the zoning map, and we'll refer to this in our staff report in a minute. You can see the south side, much more office and commercial. The north side have the, have the single-family residential in that area. And even the comprehensive plan, future land use map identifies that with the mixed use on the south side and the single-family suburban neighborhood on the north side. There's the property in question. This is Memorial Drive. This is looking towards forty-one A. And in the other direction. All right. Department comments, no real comments listed from the departments. The impact would be the introduction of an office professional use on the northern block face and increased activity levels, including traffic light and noise. Staff does recommend disapproval. The request is inconsistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The O-one district requested is an intrusion into the northern frontage of Memorial Drive, an area that remains predominantly single-family residential between West Park Drive and Fairway Drive, with the exception of a multifamily development from nineteen seventies. This established pattern reflects the suburban neighborhood land use designation. The adopted comprehensive plan's economic goals emphasize avoiding the oversaturation of commercial development, given the existing availability of O-one properties in a more suitable area identified on the future opinion map. This request is not consistent with the plan. Although the overall Memorial Drive corridor contains O-one, C-one, and C-two zoning, introducing a mid-block commercial use to the single-family block face would disrupt its character and reduce compatibility with the surrounding development, the Planning Commission also recommended for disapproval.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Chikina, you're recognized.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Jeff, I understand why the staff, because you read it out. Was that the same reason why the commissioners echoed disapproval, recommended disapproval on that?
Yes, sir. Typically, when they agree with the staff's recommendation, they will pick one of these. I don't remember which one they picked as their reasoning, but it was a unanimous disapproval.
Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more comment or question? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Were there any objections from the residents that live around in that area?
There was objections to this at the Planning Commission. You do actually have a letter for it in your packet.
One letter, one letter?
One letter, in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
So at the, at the meeting, there were, I believe, two people that spoke against this, that were residents of the area. So just, I know there may be only one letter in there, but I know two people came up to speak against it at the meeting.
Councilman. All right. Any more comment or question? We ready for item C, ordinance twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall.
Thank you, Mayor. Z forty-one, twenty twenty-five, application of Rick Rita and Michael T. Booth. This is one point seven eight acres, currently zoned R-two, and requesting R-two A, single-family residential district. This is another one a little over a year ago that you saw at the City Council. It is not an extension of R-two A. The parcel fronts Dotsonville Road approximately two hundred seventy-five feet from Arrowfield Drive and Dotsonville Road intersection. It's a large lot, single-family home site. This is in Council Ward number two, in the Woodlawn-Dotsonville Planning Area. The applicant's statement is to help with inner-city growth, to create more lots, to fulfill needs of community, to help Regional Planning Commission with Growth Plan. Again, back in twenty twenty, late twenty twenty-four, requested to go to R-six. Both the staff, the Planning Commission, and the City Council disapproved that at the time. And here's your zoning map. It's currently zoned R-two, and the request to R-two A. And in the future land use map, this is all identified as suburban neighborhood in this area. And here's the property in question. There is a single-family home set further back on the property. And there's Dotsonville Road heading out to the county. And looking back toward Dover Road. Department comments, this is in the Woodlawn Utility District. They had no comments, and it is, they do have the capacity for it. This is below the threshold for a traffic assessment, but sidewalks would be required, and they must follow the city access ordinance on this project. CDE, CDE did have a comment about the overhead lines on the property for future development. School system listed the capacities of their schools in the area. Historical estimates would put this at five units. We don't know if they will retain the current home or not, but there's two different ways they can develop it, with or without the current home on the property. And it would still yield four to five lots each time. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan. This request represents an incremental change from the existing R-two, single-family residential classification of a sixty-foot lot width and nine thousand square feet to R-two A with a forty-foot lot width and five thousand square feet. Based on historical frontage development patterns, this would equate to an increase of one additional lot. Dotsonville Road functions at significant, has a significant county and city collector road, and shared driveway connections will be encouraged at the development stage. The Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at the map, where would, where would the driveway or the road going into this, where would it come in at?
Its only frontage is on Dotsonville Road.
So. It's showing Cleveland Drive extending over, and that's not actually Cleveland. I can't remember what it is right there. But you're going to have, between it and Arrowfield Drive, we're going to put another entrance and exit. Is that what you're telling me? Because if I look to the left, it's a cul-de-sac with already lots being built. If I look north of this, then already lots being, that are there. Unless they come straight out, you're putting, we'll be putting another road in between two roads that are right on top of each other.
So that, we don't know what their development plans are yet on this. As you can see, there is an existing ranch near the back of the property. With the R-two A zoning, they could do three or four frontage lots in front of that house and leave the existing house as a flag lot. If there were four lots, we would encourage shared driveways between them, so only two new driveways, plus the driveway for this parcel. If they, and it's not a lot of land, but they could possibly do a very small cul-de-sac and get five or possibly six total lots. So every time we've run the numbers, whether it's R-two or R-two A on either of scenarios, it really gains you the one additional lot in that case.
Well. I'm, I'm not, what I'm fixing to say is not against you, okay? Don't want you taking it personally. But the statement you made, well, we really don't know what they're going to do. And you expect this board setting up here to decide on something that we don't know what's going to happen? And that's not your fault. It's our fault, because that's our process that we have laid out. And I have a hard time that road is dangerous. Mr. Brown over there can tell you, agree with me, how narrow it is. Try to pull out over there. Traffic backs up. And, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Right now, it's got one house on it. That's the way it was, everything's run fine with one house. But when we put four or five, or we don't know, then, again, you're asking this body to vote on we don't know. Thank you.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe when we discussed this under the R-six scenario, it was going to be one way in, one way out, and I wouldn't expect the Street Department to deviate from that much. But we can ask Mr. Smith while he's here, since my colleague also had a question about that, if that's okay.
Mr. Smith, your name was called. Councilman McLaughlin, if you'll ask your question.
So I know that until you have a site plan, it's really hard to gauge, but what would be the maximum amount of entrances to Dotsonville Road from this parcel?
Based on the access ordinance, they're going to have a tough time getting more than two in. But if they have individual driveways, those aren't, you know, a cul-de-sac. It's not a street connection. That's simply a driveway connection, a little different, so.
Okay. Well, there's no way they're going to get five houses on the frontage of Dotsonville Road.
Well, maybe as many as four, I think you said, and keep the existing lot. So there are, there are a couple of different scenarios there for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing as how it is already zoned R-two, as you've already stated, they can develop it right now and have potentially four lots.
Probably five.
They could still do, okay.
If they, if they tear it down.
If they tear that down, then they could, but then that's still only four more lots than what it is right now. But they, they do have the ability already.
Correct.
To be able to do that. And still would have to meet what Mr. Smith said.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comment or question? We ready for item D, ordinance thirty, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall.
All right. This is Planning Commission Case Z forty-two, twenty twenty-five, application of John Mark Holloman. This is point three-seven acres, currently zoned R-one, single-family, and requesting to go to R-six, single-family district. This is an extension of the R-six. It's a parcel of land on the north frontage of Paradise Hill Road, one hundred fifty-five feet east of Hayden Drive and Paradise Hill Road intersection. It's currently a single-family home site. The applicant's statement is to conform with the existing subdivision of Charleston Cove. It got left out when the original subdivision was designed. This is in Council Ward number six. And that makes, show you example, there's Charleston Cove as subdivided. It's currently under construction. I believe Mr. Holloman made an attempt at this parcel when he was designing that subdivision, and now it's come available, and he wants to just add it to the subdivision. The future land use map identifies this area as urban neighborhood, which the smaller lot sizes would agree with. There's the parcel off Paradise Hill Road. And looking towards downtown. Interior of the property. And the home has been removed on the property. Staff, let's see. Department comments, again, below the threshold for a traffic assessment, sidewalks are required, must follow city access ordinance. I know their comments or concerns, and the school system listed their capacities of their schools in their district there. Historical estimates would be three units or three lots. Staff does recommend approval. This request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. The proposed R-six, single-family residential request is a logical extension of the existing R-six zone and aligns with the urban neighborhood future land use designation. Paradise Hill Road functions as a city collector street. Shared driveway connections or alternative means of access, such as a rear-loaded alley, will be encouraged at the development stage. The Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Councilman Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so we don't know for sure if he's going to do a back alley entrance-exit, or is he going to connect to Paradise Hill Road?
Don't know yet. The parcel behind this, as part of the subdivision, is an open space lot right now, and he could use that for access to get to the back of these parcels.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any more comment or question? We ready for item E, ordinance thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall.
This is Planning Commission Case Z forty-three, twenty twenty-five, application of Paul Crookeberg. Applicant is Sean Robertson. This is five point one-two acres, currently zoned A.G. Agricultural District, and requesting to go to R-five Residential District. It's a parcel of land on the north frontage of Merriweather Road, approximately one thousand four hundred fourteen feet east of Trenton Road and Merriweather Road intersections. It's a large, single-family residential tract with a home and associated outbuildings on site. This is in Council Ward number twelve. The applicant's statement is for the highest and best use to match similar residential density in surrounding neighborhoods, looking to utilize R-five to build a single-family community. Here's the current zoning in the area. This is very near exit one, and you see you have a mix of a little bit of everything in the area. That hatched area is one of the first PUDs that were developed in the community over there on the west side. And here's the future land use map. Again, a little bit of everything. Dark red would be regional commercial. Urban neighborhood to the north, where you have a lot of duplexes up in that area. Single suburban neighborhood in the light yellow. Public open space with the school to the south, and then a little neighborhood commercial on the corner. Here's the property in question. That's looking back toward Trenton Road. I don't know when we took this photo, but there's not a car in sight. We don't work Sunday. Here's the home in question. You can see it's a little deteriorated at the moment. And we actually went around the back of the house this time. Department comments, off-site gravity sewer main extension would be required. A traffic assessment was required and received. They must follow the city access ordinance, and sidewalk would be required. No other department comments or concerns. The school system listed their capacities of the northeast complex. Historical estimates could be as far as sixty-one units. The applicant provided in your packet a sketch of thirty-four individual, individual units. The staff does recommend disapproval. This request is not consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. While this request presents an infill development opportunity in proximity to a multi-campus schools complex, the proposal is currently inconsistent with the established block face development pattern of Merriweather Road. This proposal appears premature, given the current capacity limitations of the Trenton Road corridor. I will also draw your attention in your packet. You do have a sketch from the developer of their proposed idea. It's just a sketch, has not been reviewed. And then there are several pages of comments from the community in your packet. Planning Commission also recommends disapproval.
Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tindall, at first I just want to say I really appreciate the RPC staff in commission recommending disapproval. I got a chuckle out of those pictures because they're absolutely deceiving. This one is really getting on my nerves, so we're going to go through it tonight. One of the things that kept coming up at the RPC from the agent was his positive traffic study. And so this is one of those situations where we really need to listen to the neighbors because their positive traffic study is not accurate, just like those, just like the pictures are not accurate. This zoning request, this lot, is much closer to Trenton in that intersection than what is being perceived in those pictures. And that area is, it's a hazard. It is always congested. And it's not just Trenton and Merriweather. If you keep going down Merriweather towards Guthrie Highway, there's a dangerous, a curve right there where it turns into Oakland. I can't tell you, at least once a month, we have our fire department and EMS out there for accidents. And then once you get to the intersection of Oakland and Guthrie Highway, that's also a situation of contention. It is always congested. One of the things that I also got a chuckle about is the agent said that it is ten seconds away from the school. While anyone who has sat in the parent pickup line knows that that is crap. It is not ten seconds away. You will sit in that line for at least ten minutes, regardless of where you're trying to go. This is in the PRZ. That's the Parent Responsibility Zone. That means that any children that live on Merriweather have to walk to school, or their parents have to drive them. Now, I understand sidewalks will have to be required, but there are no sidewalks on Merriweather to safely get those kids to that school. So the other thing is, it's like, we have to think about Pandora's Box. Every bit of that in green, that is zoned ag. So if we approve this one, we need to be prepared for future requests to rezone. And then what does that mean for Merriweather? Right now, there are no plans to widen Merriweather, and if we continue on this, on this path, we will have to. And then what does that mean for our budget as far as eminent domain? So I don't like this one. I think there were over twenty emails at the RPC, and I know that we, to the RPC staff. I know that we have gotten more. Oh, and we can't forget the flooding over in the Merriweather farm. So if you scooch that map over, there is an area of retention where all of the rainwater goes to. They're already flooding. So if we start developing this ag-zoned area, they're going to flood more. Right now, there are only a few houses where rainwater is reaching into their living area. We're going to see more of that. So please take a look at this, and please vote no next week. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Not sure how she feels about this one. Councilman Chikina, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jeff, I actually have a question for the Street Department, if he can come up.
Mr. Smith? Councilman Chikina, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you there, Mr. Smith. I got a question about traffic and the traffic study and the issue. You seen the other day, the residents came out in force, and all of them had a resounding cry about the traffic on Merriweather, trying to get onto Trenton.
Yeah.
And how hazardous. So we all know that, right? Is there any plan to get left and right lanes or traffic signal coming off of Merriweather onto Trenton anyway, right?
Yes, I will say absolutely there is, but I will say that's a TDOT project, and they're circa twenty-thirty putting a shovel on the ground on that project. It does get a signal. It gets crosswalks and sidewalks, and the apron works improved. To a point, Merriweather is widened before it tapers back to allow for multiple travel lanes to turn left and right off of that. But we don't presently have that on the books for the city because TDOT is doing it.
Okay. So, so Mayor, is there any way we can start having a conversation to at least get some left and right turn lanes off of Merriweather onto Trenton? Because that is a nightmare over there for anybody that's trying to get on and off of Merriweather, or even on and off to Trenton.
The simple answer is yes. We'll be glad to have the conversation, but as we've said, TDOT measures time in decades. So we will add that to the list. We've got a pending commission, meeting with the commissioner, so we'll certainly add it to the list.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
I think Mr. Smith could just wait a second.
All right. Your name was called.
I, I know you briefly stated it regarding, you know, shovel, twenty-thirty, but I'm going to ask the same question here that I asked at the RPC. And the reason I do that, just for the council to be aware, is at the RPC, both sides, both those for and both those against, referenced the project, the TDOT project with Trenton Road. So could you just give us a little bit of a brief update or recap of where things stand and how that could potentially change, although plans never change with TDOT and get delayed, but anyway.
Not throwing Big Brother under the bus here. So TDOT has myriad programs, the shared partnership program, which we were an applicant this past iteration, and we're not selected. And the MPO can speak to the tip and the different funding mechanisms that they utilize. But in this circumstance, TDOT's going to widen in one fell swoop and not in a phased approach from, you know, beyond Tower Town Road all the way to Needmore Road, and are spending in excess of three hundred million dollars to do that. They're currently in the right-of-way acquisition phase of that, which will be followed by the utility relocation and so on and so forth. And then, of course, the real traffic delays begin when they start cutting in the new roadway and migrating traffic and so on. As the mayor said, it's on their ten-year plan. I find that often when they speak to having a shovel on the ground, it's usually a little behind what their estimates are. And oftentimes because court cases and that sort of thing where eminent domain is pursued and whatnot. But I think twenty-thirty is optimistic.
And even with a shovel going in the ground at twenty-thirty, as stated, we won't say expected, but as stated, how long could that project of that magnitude take? take?
It's a multi.
Not including the time it takes for certain utilities to move.
Sure. I mean, it's a, it's a three-to-five-year project, for sure. And, you know, means and methods, are they planning to start at this end or that end? They've got some major, I know some of you have seen the video, the intersections that they're, they're planning for, uh, you know, beyond, they're making improvements at three-seventy-four and the diverging diamond they're proposing for, you know, the exit one-off ramp system. It's some very, very unique patterns that are coming, and it's, it's elaborate, so it's gonna take some time.
So you could potentially be looking at ten years before that part was done, not including the time it takes for utilities to move. But, um, ten years for that part to be.
Sure.
Improved.
That, that is, yeah, absolutely. Again, anytime this comes up and it moves past a rezoning phase, and I, I understand you guys don't have another opportunity to opine, we can require improvements, widening of Merriweather to a point, signals at intersections and stuff like that based on certain criteria. So when they, when they finally give us those designs and furnish those proposals to the Planning Commission, there can be additional stipulations placed on the property.
Okay. And that's all for my questions. Um, I do want to state that I was also opposed, thank you, Mr. Smith. I was also opposed during the Regional Planning Commission. My stance will not change between now and then. I realize the agent does build some beautiful things, but I do not believe it fits in this area, as was previously stated. When you're looking at everything there with Ag, you're, uh, you do have some R-four that you can see on there, but I just can't see in any way where this, um, rezoning fits in with what you have completely surrounding it. And with everything we just heard regarding Trenton Road, I just do not feel that this is the time to make a move like this and make such a substantial jump from Ag to R-five.
Any more comment or question? We're now ready for item F, ordinance thirty-two, twenty-two-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall.
Uh, Planning Commission Case Z forty-five, twenty-twenty-five. This is the application of Faith Investments. It is one point two-four acres, currently zoned M-two General Industrial District and requesting to go to C-two General Commercial District. Uh, it is not an extension of the C-two. A parcel of land fronts, uh, College Street approximately two hundred feet north of Hornberger Lane and College Street intersection. It's a former warehouse facility that has multiple commercial uses throughout the years, including flea markets, retail, and bakery. This is in Council Ward number six. Uh, the applicant's statement is uses in the area over the years have transitioned into more of a commercial area. We would agree. This is your current zoning map. Everything in gray and black is industrial or manufacturing, and we know there's a lot of uses, especially on these blocks around Hornberger, that are no longer, uh, doing that. Snuff Factory possibly the exception right there behind it. Um, you also have the previous approved Vulcan PUD across the street. Again, we're, we're working with them on some other ideas to bring to you in the future. And here's the future land use opinion map, which has this area all identified as mixed use. Mixed use is not an industrial area. It's a commercial residential retail office. Uh, this is the property in question. We had to put the sign on the building this time. There was no, nowhere to put it in the pavement out there. Looking up College Street. Uh, a traffic study was required and received, and no significant impacts to the area. Sidewalk would be required, uh, for new construction, must follow the access ordinance. Uh, no other department comments or concerns. School system did provide comments on that. Uh, historic estimates would be fourteen units if they pursue mixed use or tear down the building, which I don't think is in their plans. Staff would recommend approval. This request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the adopted Clarkson Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. The proposed C-two General Commercial District aligns with the future land use designation of mixed use and removes the heavy industrial potential permitted in the M-two General Industrial District. The proposed C-two would remove the existing legal non-conforming status of several, several established uses on site while introducing a more compatible zoning classification that aligns with the character of College Street and the downtown urban core planning area. The Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Tindall, um, if it was, if they did develop it into R-four, is that, is that what the fourteen units is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more comment or question? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so they're planning on building fourteen units.
No.
What'd you say?
They could, and again, we always give you the potential, but, uh, I don't think they're gonna tear this building down for what they paid for it, just to put fourteen units on that property.
I heard you say fourteen units. What was that for?
'Cause in the C-two designation, it can be, uh, retail and/or multifamily. So we always give you the potential for that multifamily density.
So what are they planning on, uh, building?
They just want to bring it into conformity, and it looks like in their traffic study, they talked about some indoor, uh, recreational activity.
Oh, indoor. Uh, so why they changing it to C-two?
Because its current designation as M-two does not permit you to do a health club or other use that they want to do in there. In fact, a lot, the, the use as a flea market is also non-conforming at the time, but it's been existing for a long time.
There's several flea markets around the corner.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Oh, would they widen the street?
Uh, I don't anticipate that this would be able to widen the street any further. And unless they build onto the building, the Planning Commission won't see it. Everything else will just be an internal.
Go back to that picture where the street is, so I can see the street. See? Okay. Just two lanes, there's no turning lane in that, uh, area. It would be rough to put, uh.
Yeah.
Some, some stuff there, and there's no, uh, turning lane. It's just two lanes. There's already a lot of traffic on College Street. So I can't see, uh, you know, this being, uh, changed into a C-two on College Street.
It's pretty much operating like a C-two property already. This just allows them to get a different use in there. Uh, and I think the applicant can probably answer that question better next week.
We'll see what I did on that, because, um, the street needs to be widened. Uh, we definitely need a turning lane going up College Street. And I know you said sidewalks, but sidewalks is already on one side of College Street. But we do need to make sure that the street is widened before they decide to, if they're thinking about putting duplexes or whatever they're planning to do, we just hope that they can, uh, get the street widened. Before they do that, the traffic is already bad. I know you said you did a traffic study. I would like to see a copy of that.
Uh, I think they might have been forwarded on.
Yep.
Should be in your packet.
Okay. I'll look and, look at it and see.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more comment or question? We're now ready for item G, ordinance thirty-three, twenty-two-five, twenty-six.
Uh, this is Planning Commission Case Z forty-six, twenty-twenty-five. Application of Shawn Burner and William Page. This is two point one-three acres, currently zoned R-four Multiple Family Residential District and requesting to go to C-five Highway and Artoral Commercial District. It is an extension of the C-five. It's a parcel of land fronting on the northern frontage of the forty-one A bypass, approximately eleven hundred feet east of Chesterfield Drive, forty-one A bypass intersection. This is in Council Ward number seven. And the applicant's statement is for office retail development. Here's the zoning map. So most of it's C-five in that area. These two parcels of R-four, uh, remain, and they are zoning one of the two parcels there, uh, from R-four to C-five. And in the future land use map, we've, uh, referred to this area as Corridor Commercial and a commercial industrial hybrid up there in the blue. C-five, uh, conforms with both those. Uh, there's the property in question. And looking down the, down the hill. Casson Water said a sewer main extension would be required. A traffic res, assessment was required and received, no significant impact. Sidewalks will be required with new development and must follow the access ordinance. No other department comments or concerns. Uh, impact of the C-five would be, um, supporting a diverse mix of auto-oriented commercial uses with the potential increase of traffic light and noise to the area. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan. The parcel is designated Corridor Commercial on the future land use opinion map, and the requested C-five aligns with this designation. The proposed C-five Highway and Artoral Commercial District is consistent with the established development pattern of the forty-one A bypass corridor. The Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Comment or question regarding ordinance thirty-three? We're now ready for item H, ordinance thirty-four, twenty-two-five, twenty-six.
Planning Commission Case Z forty-seven, twenty-twenty-five. The application of Bethany Obendorfer and Michael Burkhart. This is point six-two acres, currently zoned R-four Multiple Family Residential District and requesting to go to C-two General Commercial District, and it is ex, an extension of the C-two. It's a parcel of land fronting the northern frontage of Madison Street, located in the middle of the block between Tenth and Eleventh Street. The applicant's, uh, sorry, this is in City Council Ward number six. It's a former residential home converted into a commercial use. The applicant's statement is Tiny Mother's General Store is a retail-based year-round farmers' market designated to benefit the local community farmers and business owners by helping alleviate areas of food desert. It is located beside a C-two area. Here's the zoning map. You can see the C-two in the light blue just adjacent to this, and then R-four to the other side. In the future land use map, this is all considered urban core, where R-four and C-two, uh, are completely fine throughout that area. And this is also in the Historic Madison Street District, uh, and this was reviewed by the Historic Zoning Commission and received their favorable opinion. And there's the house that's been used in the past as different office uses and retail uses. Uh, this brings it into conformity, uh, for what they're requesting to do. Uh, department comments and concerns, uh, it did not receive a traffic assessment because it's below the threshold, but sidewalks would be required or are existing on the property and must follow the access ordinance. It does have an existing shared driveway with the property next door. The police department asked what does the parking situation look like? Uh, the answer to that, I believe at the department, uh, meeting, was that the property owner owns the property to, next door to it as well and to the property in the back, so it has an exit out onto Eleventh Street as well as Madison Street and parking behind both properties. Uh, the historic overlay will remain on this parcel. Any additions to the property would have to go through the Regional Historic Zoning Commission. A historical estimate would be seven units. Again, it's already R-four already. They could already do those seven units. This just allows them to do the commercial venture as well. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the, sorry, staff recommends approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan. The parcel is designated urban core on the adopted future land use opinion map, and the requested C-two aligns with this designation. The current structure has operated as a bookkeeping office and, more recently, a school academy. The owner is now seeking the C-two General Commercial District to allow for continued commercial use of the site through adaptive reuse, which is recommended in the comprehensive plan and specifically mentioned for the urban core. The parcel currently encompasses the H-one district and will remain part of the H-one district as part of this application. The Planning Commission also recommended approval.
Councilman Streeman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tindall, as we can see from this map, a very large area of this is all R-four. Can you tell the council why it is that so much of that is already, is zoned R-four when very little of it actually is utilized as R-four?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, and then I think you have to rewind the clock back to the forties and fifties when zoning in the city first got implemented. R-four was your densest district, but it could be a single-family all the way up to an apartment building. Uh, so a lot of those are old, existing, small lots, similar to R-six nowadays. Uh, but back, uh, as zoning progressed through the eighties, nineties, and into the two thousands, R-four became much more of a multifamily district. Uh, but these are a lot of grandfathered parcels with single-family on them. R-three, very similar, a little less dense, but single-family through, uh, triplexes and even quadplexes back in the day were allowed in R-three. I hope that answers the question.
It did. Uh, my second question is, as you referenced, this has previously been bookkeeping, other businesses, and of course, we've, uh, see other businesses that have been utilized on these properties. But why is it necessary this time to have it rezoned as C-two as opposed to in the past?
I, I'm looking at our code department, but I believe now with their, um, use permits, this was flagged as not conforming with the R-four. Previously, home offices were part of R-four, and I think there was a previous determination from way back prior to it even being a bookkeeping office. So as long as it stayed office, it was grandfathered, but now that they're changing from an office use to more of a retail use, uh, they need to seek the rezoning.
Okay. That's all for my questions. I will say that, um, I was in favor of this. I think this is a, a really good move. Uh, if you'll be sure and look through your packet in there, uh, the applicant has done, or the, the person, uh, the woman wanting to start the Tiny Mother's General Store, she's done a wonderful job preparing a presentation for everyone to understand exactly what her intentions and her, her plan is for this. Um, I also think, you know, I know there was a couple of people from the Historic Committee that kind of spoke both directions and admitted that they were torn. Um, the one that spoke in favor, you know, granted was torn, but, you know, she did like what the plan was there. One thing I go back to is when we had a previous zoning further up the road where you can see the small, uh, one that was changed to office. One of the comments, you know, that was made then was, one way to preserve this is by utilizing it in a business structure versus turning it into apartments where you're gutting the entire inside and, you know, adding bathrooms, bedrooms, all of that. I think you have, uh, potentially more changes when it's utilized as an R-four than when it's utilized as a commercial space. And again, was very impressed with the plan that she brought forward as what her intentions are for the area, and I think it's something that could be greatly used in our downtown as well.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I know as, uh, some look at it with the access on Madison Street, as the applicant mentioned at the RPC, and as I had used many a times, 'cause several many years ago, my wife worked for that bookkeeping office, and using that back access out off of Madison Street to go out the back driveway was a great benefit for not having to go on Madison Street trying to get in and out. So, you know, with having that additional access point on there, I believe it'll be a good fit for the neighborhood.
Any more comment or question? We're now ready for item I, Resolution twenty-nine, twenty-two-five, twenty-six. Mr. Tindall.
Okay. Mayor and City Council, you do have an abandonment on your agenda this month. This does require a public hearing. It is a resolution. Uh, this is a partial right-of-way abandonment of Cambridge Road. It is a paved right-of-way, but as you can see in the little yellow area in the middle there, uh, back in the day, it was intended to be a stub road that would continue, uh, and it did not continue to the subdivision to the south. Uh, they used Georgetown Road instead. So, yeah, the property owners there have requested that it be abandoned. That's just a survey of the area and be returned to those two property owners on, uh, that road. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions about this resolution?
Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of this.
Councilman Brown?
So would that be split between the two residences, or how is that gonna be divided up to those?
Yeah, when, when it's something like this where it's clear left to right, the assessor will split it right down the middle, return it to them, and then any future survey of the property will pick up this abandonment, and then they'll replat those parcels whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Split the baby. All right. Any other comment or question? All right. Mr. Tindall?
Uh, that concludes our report this month.
All right. Thank you. You almost got an hour.
Almost.
Consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and may be approved by one motion. However, a member of the council may request that an item be removed for separate consideration under the appropriate committee report. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-two-five, twenty-six. A resolution approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine in a food store at Kroger Limited Partnership One, doing business as Kroger number five-eighty, located at two-zero-one-five Needmore Road. Resolution twenty-six, twenty-two-five, twenty-six. A resolution approving a retail liquor store certificate of compliance for Gantium Patel for Corks and Caps Liquor Store at one-hundred Highland Bluff Way, and repealing the certificate of compliance for barrel and bottle liquor store located at four-four-seven Warfield Boulevard. Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-two-five, twenty-six. A resolution approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine in a food store[1793.64] of compliance for sale of wine in a food store at Sutton Service number seventy-five, located at fifteen-fifty Hancock Road. Resolution, Resolution Twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, a resolution approving appointments to the Adult Oriented Establishment Board, the After Hours Establishment, Establishment Board, and the Museum Board, and the Adoption of Minutes from October second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comment or question regarding the consent agenda? Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
I just have, uh, asked for a clarification on B. Uh, I noticed this has happened a couple, three times, where, uh, doing away, we're repealing a certificate for a liquor store in one place and reissuing in another place. I just need some clarification on that.
If you'll remember, we had that lottery, and this name, it's drawn by name.
Right.
Um, and the location, they're same name, but they're changing locations, so we have to repeal the, the certificate of compliance for the former location and issue a new one for the same name but a different location.
Okay, then, just to make sure, we have somebody, you know, when they applied for the lottery, they had to go through, the address had to go through a procedure and be certified, basically. And so are we doing the same procedure for this one here, the address?
They've got to check it out. They've got to go through the police department and building codes, and if you'll hang on just a minute, um, we've got an ordinance, proposed ordinance in the Finance Committee that should clarify a lot of this.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, anytime. All right, any other comment or question regarding the consent agenda? Good question. Now we're ready for the Finance Committee. Chairman Streeman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance Twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, first reading, an ordinance to amend the official code, Title II, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Two, Intoxicating Liquor pertaining to Section two-dash-two-one-four, Procedures for Processing Application for Certificates of Compliance for Liquor Stores. The Finance Committee did vote in favor of approval, and Mayor, due to the councilperson, a councilman from Ward Two, working diligently on this with our city clerk and our city attorney, would you mind if I turn the floor over to her and allow her to present her research and work on this?
Councilman McLaughlin, your name is called, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't take their credit for this. Lisa, or our city clerk, did a lot of work on this. So this will, this will address the concerns that the council member from Ward Four brought up. Since we did the lottery in July, we have had four, now five or six, people who won the lottery and, and applied under one address, now switching another address. There was, that was, that was okay according to the code that we had, but, uh, the city clerk had indicated that sixty-seven people applied for the same address in the lottery. So what this ordinance will do is require people to, A, show proof that they own the address, or B, uh, submit a lease from the owner that indicates that they are approved to have a liquor store in that location prior to the application process. So if this had been in place before, it would have saved the city clerk, the police department, and building codes a lot of work running down people, um, for the lottery. So this will hopefully eliminate the gaming of the lottery process for future applicants. And then also, it, it looks like there are three lottery winners that have not proper, filing, prop, sorry, I apologize, filed the proper information to the state to get their state certification. So the reason this is coming up now is that we will have to initiate the lottery process early next year to fill those three that are available.
Comment or question? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
I want to ask this question, thank you, Mayor. So this will prevent the same person from filing for the same place, this ordinance?
Councilman McLaughlin.
Um, what it will do, a couple of things is, yes, that should eliminate that, and then also, um, somebody can't apply for the lottery if they don't have a confirmed location to have that liquor store.
Right.
Yes.
But it will, I want to make sure it definitely prevents the same person filing for the same place.
Yes, ma'am.
Or the same location.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Councilman Chandler?
Thank you, Mayor. Will this prevent them from coming in and changing the addresses? I use one address, I apply, and I'll just say Riverside Drive, I win, and I decide, well, I think I'll just move it up in the middle in the province. Will this eliminate them being able to change the locate, cause basically, where I look at it is, is when we do the lottery, we're, it's for that location. We're saying, okay, for that location, not giving you the opportunity to just to have the certificate and then put it wherever you decide you want it.
Will look to the sponsor to answer that question?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're trying to prevent. Now, if a business changes hands, that would be the proper time for them to come back for a change of address, but we're trying to eliminate somebody gaming the system by saying, oh, I want to have a liquor store at this address, knowing that it's the distance requirement away from an existing one. You have to prove that you either own the property, or you have a lease agreement with the owner to have a liquor store in that location before you enter the lottery process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Any other comment or question? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
And just for clarification, if, if, if a person comes in and, and, and filed to say, okay, we want to open a liquor store, I mean whoever, um, at one location, and as he was saying, uh, they apply for that particular location, and then after, they want to change it. So I want to, I hope that this will stop that, that they cannot change the address if, yeah, they have proved that they own this lot and they have a lease, and then they'll say, oh, we want to change the address. You see what I'm saying? I hope that something is put in there to stop that, too. That's what he was saying.
Under this, the only, the only time we would expect for an address to change is if somebody sells that liquor store business, and the new owner is looking to get a certificate of compliance under the new ownership.
So if they sell it, then we need to have proof that they were sold?
Yes, and they'll have to come back, they'll have to go through
Go through the whole process.
The same application process, not through the lottery. They'll have to submit the same exact documentation.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any more comment or question regarding this ordinance? Chairman Streeman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm going to take the next three at once, and I'll do like I've been doing when we have similar items. So next week, I will, uh, request to take this up with one motion. But Ordinance Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property located at two-oh-nine Plum Street, Clarksville, Tennessee, for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. Ordinance Twenty-three, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, first reading, an ordinance art, authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property located at one-twenty-one Sampson Street, Clarksville, Tennessee, for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. An ordinance Twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property located at one-oh-five Brooks Alley, Clarksville, Tennessee, for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. Both the Finance and Neighborhood and Community Services Committees voted in favor of approval of these three ordinances.
Questions regarding these three ordinances? Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
I see that they're all in Ward Six, and I think that's a good thing, that there are going to be some affordable houses put over in this ward again, uh, which we have been doing. I think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding these three ordinances? Chairman Streeman?
The, uh, we'll just add, thank you for that comment, and very much, I say this all the time, I appreciate Ms. Michelle Austin and for all she does to work with, for those in our community, and work with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity, to try and create affordable housing for those that need it. Ordinance Twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, first reading, an ordinance amending Part Two, Code of Ordinances, Title Thirteen, Utilities and Service, Chapter Three, Gas, Water, and Sewer Service, and Chapter Four, Water and/or Sewer Service to Particular Areas or Subdivisions, the City of Clarksville, for the purpose of establishing the Clarksville Gas and Water Board. Both the Finance and the Gas and Water Committees recommended approval of this item, and I know that, um, some of us have heard this multiple times by serving on both committees, and greatly appreciate that Mr. Riggins, I believe, has now met with all of us one-on-one to discuss this all in detail and be able to answer our questions. But without objection, Mayor, I would really like, if you would, ask Mr. Riggins to join us up here and cover it so that he can make the good presentation he's made for all of us.
No objection. Mr. Riggins, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We all know how I can get when I start talking about my department, so for brevity, I've written my comments down to begin with.
We've set an alarm, okay.
All right. As you all know, you all know how long that this, uh, this legislation's been in the works for my department. I know when the mayor first asked me to be interim in this position over six and a half years ago, this is one of the main topics I spoke of then. My intent back then was to revise our customer service policies, improve our relationship with our employees, customers, community stakeholders, and federal and state regulators, and then once we have elevated our position in all other industry-related areas, bring forward this board legislation. I appreciate my team of staff, the mayor, Tessa Luntz, and Eric Bittner for their support and assistance in drafting this ordinance. I also appreciate each one of you for taking the time to meet with me beforehand and taking extensive look at what we're trying to achieve. Uh, in an attempt to avoid being overly redundant with what we've already discussed in multiple meetings, uh, we'll mention, mention just a few main advantages of board governance. It improves the local control through increasing direct customer representation in decisions in the customer service policies and future direction of company goals. I emphasize that this, that with this, we will remain a publicly owned utility, which, as you know, is very important to me, uh, which you also know, it ensures that we are directly accountable to the citizens we serve as decisions regarding service and infrastructure needs are made by our customers. It reduces the potential for future short-term politically influenced decisions conflicting with the overall long-term strategic goals of the utility. Customer represent, representative board governance improves future infrastructure stability through greater assurance of essential maintenance performance, capital projects involving upgrades and replacement of aging infrastructure, and long-term planning for future growth in regulatory mandates. And lastly, it allows for representation of the entire customer base and business decisions. Currently, under city council governance, uh, customers whose services are located outside the city, Clarksville city limits, have no representation in gas and water business decisions. While TCA requires that board members reside within city limits, it does allow for the potential to appoint someone who also has service outside of the city limits, therefore providing representation for our outside city customers. I know that last comment, I believe I may have misspoken in one of the previous meet, public meetings, and I apologize for that, and I appreciate Mr. Bittner for helping me clarify that in TCA, but it does require that all board members reside within the city limits. And then, I'd like to also publicly address some of the questions that we've been asked, um, about this proposed board throughout this week, mainly describing the composition of the board, the appointment, meetings, compensation, et cetera, most of which, as you know, is dictated by state law. Uh, the board will be composed of five members, again, who are both residents within the city and customers of gas and water, one of whom will be a city councilman. And again, our plan is to try to appoint one board member who lives within the city, but also has service outside of the city limits, so we can try to guarantee that our outside city customers have representation. The mayor will be a non-voting ex officio sixth member of the board. The mayor, subject to this body's approval, will appoint the board members who will serve terms of five years. All board meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. For the hiring of the future general manager, the board will make a recommendation to the mayor. The mayor shall appoint the general manager, subject to this body's approval. Also important to note for my employees is that the employees of gas and water will remain under the purview of the city's HR department relative to all rights and benefits provided for within the city code, which, as you see in the ordinance, it ties into those proposed, proposed revisions in the second half of this ordinance. Again, thank you for your time and consideration of this legislation. As you know, my employees and I eat, sleep, and breathe gas and water business. And I was, and I would not be here to question this if I did not wholeheartedly believe that this is the best avenue for the future of my department and our customers. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Riggins. Councilman Chikina, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Riggins, um, it's an easy question, but it's an important question at the same time for the residents of Clarksville, um, because some have asked me this, so I'm just going to ask you directly. Does this board, this forming this board, have anything to do with the rate increase?
No.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify that, because people have asked me, um, that, so I just want you to clarify for the record.
Just clarification, the board will vote on all future rate increases, but this has, this legislation has nothing to do with a rate increase.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Mr. Riggins. Um, I really appreciate you, uh, taking the time to sit down with me one-on-one, but I still have lots of questions, so we're going to go through it tonight.
Okay.
Um, in regards to the board and their resident status, um, what you said tonight and what is in the language is a little contradictory. Would you mind bringing an amendment forward to clarify and make it, make this ordinance reflect what you're saying as far as the residence requirement?
I do not mind at all. I believe what you're mentioning is under the composition where it says...
Says it needs to be a Montgomery County resident?
Yes, and I'll tell you why that is. So I drafted this, basically taking the code that CDE has for a board, and I changed the parts that would affect gas and water. Theirs currently says this is the only reason it says that, but I'm, I'm completely fine bringing in amendment for next week that changes that in a resident of Montgomery County, Tennessee, to say a resident of Clarksville, Tennessee.
And can you clarify that it needs to be their primary residence? Because one, um, point of concern for me during the Finance Committee meeting was that you said that they could live somewhere else outside of the county, as long as they just owned property in the county, and for me, that's a little bit of a concern. Can we correct that, too?
Yes, and I would, I would defer to Mr. Bittner. Uh, I mean, we, we could put that in there, that it's their primary, I think that's the intent of the law, it's their primary residence, but we could absolutely... Yes, the TCA says the board members who are and have been residents of the city or town for not less than one year next preceding the date of appointment. So they would have to currently live within the city for one year before they're allowed to be on the board.
Okay, so we just need our ordinance to reflect what the TCA says, then?
Yes.
And I'm happy with that. Um, so within this, it also mentions stormwater responsibility a few times. Does that mean that gas and water is going to have a change in responsibility when it comes to our stormwater management?
Not with this, this ordinance does not do that. It allows that for future. As you know, we're doing a, a stormwater study currently, um, just like CDE's, that, that portion of the code allowed them to get in the broadband business. So what this does is allows this body to give us the authority to get into a, to add a utility, another leg of that after the fact. So once this study's complete, and that comes before this body, if you chose to, to start a stormwater utility and put that under gas and water, that part of the code allows you to do that, but it takes this body to form that and do that.
My concern with, if we do have in the near future, and I hope we do, a stormwater utility, is that going to fall under your board, or will it fall under the authority of the city council?
It would fall under the board, under the jurisdiction of the TCA and all other laws that, uh, that the utility has to abide by.
Um, I know that you addressed the rates, um, already, however, right now, any rate increase is reviewed by the city council, and that there's thirteen of us here, and this puts it into the hands of just a few. Um, how can this city council hold you and this board accountable for your rates and your rate increases in the future?
So gas and water, in its nature and by law, is a not, non-for-profit now. We are, TCA sets the parameters for those rates. The Comptroller's Office, T-Bore, multiple other agencies, uh, they weigh in on that. We're audited by that. So basically, our budget every year has to show income going in, coming in, and expenses going out, and that, that has to match. We can't, we can't store up money. Um, and we, we are responsible to the Comptroller's Office, our customers. There's avenues for them to complain to T-Bore to have us investigated for those rates, and we would have to answer to that as well. Uh, one answer is, I, I would venture to say we're probably the most heavily audited department in the city. Uh, we, and, and we welcome that. As you know, you, you, you see those results, uh, every other month in a report, uh, not just for finances, but for what we do as far as the system through, that we're audited by T-Puck. but for what we do as far as the system through, that we're audited by T-Puck through inspections, T-Deck through inspections, but also by our own auditing department. And it's in this code as well, in this ordinance, it remains there, that we have to be audited by a third party every single year as well, and turn that and submit that to you.
My next question is about pilots. Can you explain to me how you handle those now, and how that might change under this, if you get your board?
Yes, it will not change. As you know, because we are title of the government, we don't pay taxes, so we pay pilots. It's actually in the legislation on page nine, letter K, and again, once again, I know you've never heard this before, that's dictated by state law as well. Yes, as you know, much of this is dictated by there, so we will follow the letter of the law, just like we do now, but as far as that situation now versus January 1, if this passes, it will not change.
If you, if gas and water gets their board, how could that affect the bond ratings for gas and water and for City General, and could it?
I don't believe that it will affect it one way or the other, either way, especially not immediately, and I don't believe it will affect it negatively at all. As you know, in our last report, our current debt-to-operating revenue ratio is 2.33, which is a double-A rating, just shy of a triple-A rating. Our current debt coverage ratio is 2.46, which equates a triple-A rating, but I don't think that will change any of that. What they look at is the finances. One of the things that I do think will be considered is because we spend, anytime we issue bonds, we are drilled on everything we have, including our city's growth, the potential for future revenue, future debt, but what they also ask me every single time is, how is the relationship between you and your governing body? And fortunately, for the last six and a half years, I've been able to say it's great. They've approved everything that we've taken them, but I will say, it is always a concern to those financiers and our financial planners of the potential for politics to weigh in on the decisions of this body. It is brought up every single time we go for a bond issuance.
Thank you. One thing that you mentioned was that there's no plans of gas and water going private, that it'll remain public. Where is the guarantee in this language that it will not go private?
There is no guarantee in this language, because you can't write that to guarantee. What I can tell you is for that privatization to happen, and the research I've done in TCA, the board would have to approve that, but this body would also have to approve that, the privatization. And for the record, I would, my opinion would be to never privatize any of our utilities.
And I believe you, my concern is future leadership, so... And my last question, I know that you, that we talk about representation a lot, but my concern is transparency. With this going, with you getting a board and authority going out from under the city council, which I'm not opposed to, but how can we make sure that the city council, and most importantly, our residents, stay informed about what's going on with gas and water?
Yes, so in the legislation, there are reports that I am, I have to give you, that I give you now, that I will have to continue to give you. All of our meetings are public meetings, that's by this, that's by state law, they have to be public. This body, you appoint the board members, so you have a say in that now, or you will have. This body will also have a representative on the board. The mayor will be an ex officio member of this board, and I know you all hear from your constituents constantly every day, some of you maybe every hour. And again, through the audits, everything we do is public. We still have to abide by requests for public information. All of our audits, they're not just sent to me, as the mayor can attest to, beyond the finances, but also the inspections. The mayor gets those at the same time we do. Sometimes, he gets those before we get those, the results of those. So it is, everything's up front and center, and the way it is now is the way it will continue to be, and it's mandated to be that way.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your hard work and for answering all my questions.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Riggins, some of the questions that she asked you, I was going to ask about the increase in fees and rates, in which I already talked to you about that. That's the only thing that I'm concerned about, is that the increase in rates. Do you foresee any increases being needed coming forward?
At some point, I will guarantee there will be a rate increase that comes, whether it's in front of a board or this body, and I'm not saying that being in any kind of way, but absolutely, as inflation happens, as capital projects happen, aging, infrastructure, things like that, at some point, whether it is me or a future general manager, one of them will either ask this body, a board, or whoever's governing our utility for a rate increase, whether that's gas, water, sewer, or all three.
I just hope that we're not setting up this board so that you all can just increase rates and fees, you know, continuously, because there are people who cannot afford to accept these new increases in rates yearly, and I know that we're dealing with that now, you know. So, now let me move on with what I want to ask you. She asked some of the questions I was going to ask, but this is one question I asked you, and I want this to be on the record for the public. With this being inclusive board, how many minorities will you have on that board? I know you said it's going to be six people, how many?
I can tell you my personal plan. Of course, it's nowhere in writing what that looks like. I plan for a very diverse board, and by diverse, I mean in all ways. I don't want all of my customers from the north side of town. I don't want all of them from the Sango area. I want them diverse on socioeconomic status, what area of town they live in, minority, gender, all of that. Yes, ma'am, and we will, and again, when it's all said and done, you ensure that that happens as well.
Yes, we definitely would like to see that, that the board will be inclusive, making sure that African-Americans do have a seat at the table, and I want to commend you on, you told me some things that you had done, you had hired six blacks the other day, and you made it diverse, and I like that. I see that you're trying to get it where it is a diverse department, and it's inclusive of all people, the people that we represent, and who pays the fees and pays your, you know, your income, all of y'all's incomes, all of our incomes, and so I just thank you for that. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Riggins, you talked about different ways that the information will be available for the public as well as for us to be able to find out what's going on with gas and water. Also, one of the things, you'll also be, well, probably not you, but someone from your staff, and I bet I can guess who, will be presenting to the finance committee monthly, just like CDE does at this point, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So that information will still be presented to us and available for us in a multitude of different ways, then?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And again, was I correct in my assumption that it probably wasn't going to be you presenting that to us?
I may attend the meeting, but I will probably, most likely, not be the one presenting that, no, ma'am.
He said, I think I know which one, and she does a fabulous job.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a question that may be in reference to that rate increase. Some people are thinking that this board is going to be a bunch of big executives, high-paid personnel. So, I would just like to, you know, put it on the record, I know it's in there, but the compensation for these board members is going to be how much a month?
Yes, sir. You will never believe that that is also dictated by state law. And so, TCA says that it's done through, it's called an allowance, and it says that board members who govern water and sewer utility can be paid $100 a month, they can get $100 a month. Then it also says in the next section that for a gas utility who is also governed by that same board, you can add $25 a month. So, the board members, the way we have in section 13, in proposed section 13204E compensation is to pay board members a rate of $125 per month. And, of course, they could be reimbursed for any travel or anything that had to do with training, anything like that. Currently, as you know, most of our training, board required training that you have to take now is our quote-unquote "board." We do that through CODI, you can do that in the privacy of your own home on a computer or an iPad now.
Right, I just wanted to get that out there, that, you know, these people aren't going to be making $100,000 a year to sit on this board, you know, $125 a month, you know, there will be people that'll turn it down because of that.
That's one of my concerns, yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Thank you, I guess I'll add a little part two to our previous council person over there. How can a resident apply to be on the board? How does that process look like?
They can contact the mayor's office, they could contact us, and of course, we will relay that information to the mayor. There's, I think, you have a process now for that, City General does, and we would be happy to abide by that same process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other comment or question regarding this ordinance? Thank you, Mr. Riggins, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 26, 2025, 26, first reading, except, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Riverchase Marine Terminal LLC to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of the Greenway walking trail. The finance committee voted in favor of approval.
Any comment or question regarding this ordinance? Chairman Streetman.
Resolution 24, 2025, 26, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the city of Clarksville Police Department, the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation, and the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Securities Tennessee Highway Safety Office pertaining to grant funds for the purchase and implementation of oral drug testing equipment. Both the finance and the public safety committees voted in favor of approval. And Mayor, Chief Burdine did such a great job in presenting this at the finance committee and found it interesting in his presentation, talking about it. Would you be willing to ask him to come up here and talk about this?
Should we put it to a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Chief Burdine, your name was called.
I don't have a presentation, per se, but...
I phrased that wrong, I apologize.
That's okay, I'll read. So, the Tennessee Highway Safety Office is partnering with the Tennessee Bureau of Investigations and has provided a grant-funded piece of law enforcement technology to assist in the investigation of driving under the influence offenses, including vehicular assault and vehicular homicide cases. The Clarksville Police Department has been selected as one of the first 24 agencies in the state to receive this equipment at no cost. In March of last year, Madison's law has passed, House Bill 1204, is codified as Tennessee Code, annotated 5510406. This law authorizes a law enforcement officer who has probable cause to believe an operator of a motor vehicle is driving under the influence of an intoxicant or has committed certain vehicular offenses to administer an oral fluid test under specified circumstances. The statute also establishes that any such oral fluid test is admissible as evidence in related trial. This equipment provided, the SOTOCSE oral fluid mobile system, is a portable device used during initial investigation phase, either roadside or another location. Once an officer has completed or attempted the standard filter bribe test or established probable cause by other means, the driver may be asked to consent for the oral fluid testing. I believe I sent a picture of what this looks like. It's a handheld device, and just so you can get an idea what it is, and it has cartridges, the saliva is gained or is taken and then entered to this device. This MOU is needed. Oftentimes, we are going to a call or a driving under the influence suspicion, and we're not for sure. You have somebody who's failed their first failed sobriety test, and they might not have the apparent odor of alcohol, and we don't want the person on the road, if they shouldn't be driving, but we also want the truth. So this is not something that we can just come up to and suspect or have a gut feeling about somebody who's under the influence. We have to have probable cause before this can even be done. And this machine will detect certain amount of drugs, or certain types of drugs, to include amphetamines, oxycodone, opiates, methamphetamine, cannabis, cocaine. So this kind of will steer an officer to the right direction if they're suspicious of somebody who is driving under the influence. And again, I reiterate that there has to be probable cause established before we can use this. You also have to go through training with this. We have three officers trained at this time. This would not be just given out to every officer, there'd be only officers that are trained with it will be able to utilize this as well. So there's test strips, they go into that device there, and then will indicate what type of drug, if there is any. There is a, I think it's Shelby County, I was told, that has utilized this machine, and 70070, the presumptive test, which would be this, was later validated through actual exam through a lab, that what was on this machine was also in their body. It's just like a filter bribe or a field test kit. If we suspect somebody has, let's say they have a green substance in a pouch, and it smells like marijuana, it looks like marijuana, it's a green leafy substance, we do a field test kit, which is a little device, it's a little clear sack, and it's filled with capsules, you bust the capsules, and it will turn a certain color. If it turns a color, it's field testing positive for that particular drug. Now, we have to still take that drug and send it to the lab to validate that what was on that presumptive test is actually what was there. So that's similar to this. It would still need to be validated through another source.
Riveting presentation, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
I have one slide.
You have one slide.
Yeah, that slide is small.
Councilman Lovato, please get us out of this.
Yes.
A-plus on your presentation.
Thank you.
One of the things that you said in the public safety committee meeting, and that I just want to reiterate, is that there is no cost to your department for this, not for training, not for the supplies, not for the kits, now or in the future.
They've decided to give us two devices if we choose to do it. There is a, the costs associated with the refills, I think it comes with 24, and those are a, we would have to be responsible for purchasing those. However, for to purchase those, we always have grant funds available through THSO, so it'd be no cost to the city, it would just go through the grant if we had to refill these capsules. I don't foresee us using this every day. This is going to be a start for the major accidents or fact investigators who investigate the fatal crash team that do the vehicular homicides or those types of cases, will be utilizing these the most.
Thank you. And you said that we were picked one out of 24 cities to get this in the state of Tennessee for break, correct?
Yes.
So I just want to take this opportunity to tell you how proud I am of you and your department and being so esteemed, and what this means for the justice of our city, especially in these fatal DUI cases.
Thank you very much. We're trying to get every toll that we can to help professionalize who we are, and I think that this will not only benefit the police department, it could benefit citizens too. If somebody's, looks like they're DUI, and without this, sometimes we just have to use our training and experience, but this would definitely help us to find out the truth of what's going on with somebody.
Can you name the other 23 cities?
No, cannot.
Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I too appreciate what you, you know, done to bring this here, and I know one of the things you kind of just preluded to there, and that we've talked about before, is that it could appear that somebody was under the influence, but this could actually let your officers know that they're not necessarily under the influence, but we could be suffering a medical emergency of some sort to be able to, you know, get them the help that they need right away, because again, it being a truth finder, and then also, one of the things you and I discussed is, especially in this day and age, every one of those that you mentioned, there's not going to be something that you can smell on the person that could be being tested. So sometimes, the only way you can find out it and get quick answers would be through these measures.
That's a good point, I should have said that. Thank you for saying that.
Well, again, I appreciate this and appreciate your willingness to talk to me prior to the finance committee meeting during this, and you'd be willing to come up here and talk about it in detail as well, so thank you.
Councilman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation, reading it, you're reading very well.
Thank you.
Very well. Now... Very well. Now, I know you said it tests for cannabis and all kinds of things like codeine, all these different drugs. Now, many people are prescribed these drugs. So if they, I pulled over for this and they test positive for it, for a, a drug, uh, and they tell the police, well, I'm prescribed this drug. I'm, I have a prescription for this. How is this going to stop the person from going to jail or being accused of something that they're prescribed for? How do we deal with that?
It's not necessarily, well, you gotta keep in mind that this can only be used after probable cause is assumed that the person is driving under the influence.
I understand that.
So if you take felt sobriety tests, let's say for example, is that you are just, if an officer pulls somebody over, they're acting off, something's going on, they don't, they don't smell alcohol, but they're stumbling, and we ask them to do felt sobriety tests, and they fail their felt sobriety test. So now the officers are thinking, okay, so the days, they don't smell of alcohol. We think something's going on. Do I let this person drive away? Or, and cause another accident, then be liable for that? Or that, do they arrest them? Well, this will help them determine what path to go within that decision is had.
Even if they're prescribed?
If you're prescribed drugs, if you're, yeah, if you, if you're failed felt sobriety test and you're able to be arrested, and you're on prescribed drugs, oftentimes those drugs that you prescribed will say, do not drive or take heavy machinery. So you should, a person should know that if I take these, I don't need to be driving, because it's illegal.
So they could still be arrested if they, uh, you know, driving under the, uh, prescription drugs?
Correct. They, they, they could be, but that would be the same case if, this just helps them, um, find out the truth of what's in that person.
Right.
Rather than not knowing and still making arrests. It's better to have all the knowledge that you can about the individual than have a guess, a question mark there.
Because there was some stuff on the news about, uh, police arresting some people that were, uh, they had a illness. And the guy told him, you know, that's my illness. I have a problem. But they arrested him anyway. He said, I'm not drunk. I'm not drunk. But they arrested him anyway, and then they found out that the man was telling the truth. And so, you know, and it caused a lawsuit against the police department. So I'm just trying to find out, you know, how far do we go with this? You know, if it's prescription, prescribed, you know, do we arrest these people, or do we say, okay, well, you need to go home. Um, I know you on this drug. I'm, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just thinking a scenario here, uh, trying to figure out how far do we go with this?
Well, we go by what the law allows. And the, the law allows us to, if we have probable cause to believe that they are driving an influence, then they're able to use this test to, to determine what's in their system, rather than not knowing.
Yeah, you can be stopped for probable cause, uh, because of something they think they might have done, but some are still arrested falsely and falsely charged. And we see this all the time.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that, that your probable cause to pull somebody over is a lot different than probable cause to arrest somebody.
Right.
So arresting somebody, it means they would be arrested. Regardless, you have probable cause to arrest. The officer has to make a decision. Do I arrest this person for driving under the influence based on the felt sobriety test? Or do I deter, use this test to add just more evidence or more factual to the decision that he or she is making?
This is an iffy situation. It can be, it can be detrimental.
Yeah, I just don't see the downside to knowing what's inside somebody's system to having that question mark.
I'm not guessing. I'm just saying, I'm just thinking of, you know, how I have seen things on TV about they were falsely arrested due to the test that the police gave these people. And so, you know, this is not just one case. This has been a few cases that I've seen on the news, and I'm sure we all have seen this. I'm sure you have too. So I'm just saying, I just hope that we be careful how we handle this situation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Uh, just to clarify for the public, uh, the incidences that the previous speaker mentioned are not related to the Clarksville Police Department, and the jurisdictions that had those cases did not have this equipment to prevent that. So I appreciate the fact that our grants rider and the police department have worked to make the job a little bit easier for the people that are trying to solve these cases where people are killed for people driving under the influence. And as somebody that just had hand surgery, I opted not for the things that I can't take while driving and opted for Ibuprofen, because my doctor said if you're going to be driving or operating heavy equipment like a forklift or whatnot, you can't take this stuff. So that's the responsibility. Just like if I go have a beer, I probably shouldn't be driving either. It's common sense. So, thank you. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Chandler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I was a fact team member for seven years. I'd have give my left arm to have had this and, and be able to, to get this. Uh, the thing about it is, and to answer some of the previous questions, the only thing that has a number put to it is alcohol influence. These drugs that you talk about, whether it's prescription or not, all they have to do is say positive. That's it. You know, you can sit there and pop Valiums all day, and there's not a way. You gotta have this percentage of Valium. Just, you're driving, you're taking Valium, it shows up in your system, that's DUI. And, uh, I applaud the police department for getting involved in something like this. Uh, because real quick, uh, there have been more people killed in the United States on DUI offenses than all the casualties of all the wars we've ever fought combined. So, thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, sir. Councilman Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Chief, so I just want to run through the process here. So like, let's say you have a car, they're, they're swerving, and, um, you, you pull them over, and then, uh, you do a felt sobriety test, and, um, let's just say they, they fail that, and then they say, okay, well, you gotta take the, like, it's like a, like a breathalyzer, basically, right?
Not really. It's a, it's a device that we collect saliva from, and it goes into that device.
Well, it's orally, like
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Administered. Um, what if they, what if they refuse?
We can't, we're not gonna force them. You know, what we can do, uh, at that point is get probable cause for a search warrant, and the law does allow us to do mandatory search warrants on blood draws, and that could be another avenue that we go. But hopefully they would allow this, to do this, but we're not gonna force our, these things down people's mouths. Good question.
I was just curious, because like, um, as far as like, like if, if someone can deny, like, doing the, the felt sobriety test, I mean, is it under that same, kind of like, that same law, that same, like, legal, like, language?
I haven't read, I don't, there's protections in place, yes, from making somebody do the test.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, we would certainly not want to get the habit of making anybody do anything. The only time that we can do that is a mandatory blood draw, which is a, requires a signature from magistrate or judge in order to get that done. These would not fall into that category.
Okay.
Yes. And also reiterate that these are gonna be used primarily as we start out on vehicular homicides or major fact team investigations. Uh, as of right now, it's not gonna be your everyday, just, you know, DUI driver, because we don't have that many people trained.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any more comment or question? Chief, well done.
Thank you.
That concludes this report.
Chair, Chairman Streetman?
That concludes my report as well.
All right. Gas and Water Committee Chairman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
We'll have a report next week.
Thank you. Labor and Community Services Chairman Shakinib, you're recognized.
I have my report next week, Mayor.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I will have a full report next week, but I do want to mention a couple of events that have registrations that are coming up, uh, or closing soon. Uh, there are still spots for the Clarksville Half Marathon 5K and One Mile Race downtown on Saturday, 7:00 AM. On November 14th, the Speakeasy Soiree is at the Willmann Rudolph Event Center from 7:00 to 10:00. And on, uh, November 15th, we've got, uh, local author and historian Ronnie Tunnelson, Tummelson, sorry, uh, who was going to give a presentation on his new book, Tennessee Charcoal Iron, uh, that discusses the role that iron furnaces played in shaping the region's economy. And you can sign up for all those events at the Parks and Rec website.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee Chairman Lovato, you're recognized.
I'll have a full report next week.
Thank you. Transportation, Streets and Garage Committee Chairman Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a report on November the 6th.
All right. Thank you. We're now ready for public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the council? All right. Mayor and council member comments. Next week, we'll read into the record pursuant to state law, the report on our debt inter fund loan. Uh, Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to, uh, publicly thank the Parks and Recreation Department and our grants rider and the Community Health Foundation for the amazing expansion that we celebrated today at Yulin Burchett Park. Um, probably most of the Burchett family was there in attendance, and it's such, it's such a great asset to go from what we had to what we have now. It's adaptive for people in wheelchairs and disabled. And I just want to thank everybody for the hard work. The work, as I understand, was all done by, internally by our Parks and Rec staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Streetman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I should've said something about this at the first meeting that we had this month, but October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. My mother is a breast cancer survivor, so I want to, the month's still here, so I can still do it. I want to take time to remind everyone, please make sure you are getting your mammograms. Get them done regularly so that you can ensure that the sooner you find out, the sooner you can be ready to treat, and you're, you can beat it, just like my mom beat it. So, um, please, even though it's, October's almost over, go ahead and get it scheduled if you haven't already done so.
Any other comment or question? I have just one comment I'd like to make. To the legislative, legislative and executive branch in Washington DC, get your tails to work and do your job. Thank you. We're adjourned.